Call to order the common council meeting for Monday, May 19th, 2025. Roll call, please. Let the record reflect that all are present. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Approval of minutes of the meeting held April 21st, 2025. Move to second and any changes or corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Citizen comments, we had none. Please continue.
B Communications petitions reports of departments. B one approval of the following applications. A 179 operators licenses. B four temporary Class B beer under Class B wine licenses.
Gentleman from 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to concur with B one.
Move in a second to concur on item B one. At this time, open it up to a hearing. Anyone here speak on item C one?
B one, sir. Bravo one.
Okay, item B one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Your, or motion carries.
See recommendations from the committee on licenses and permits. C one renewal applications for operators licenses. A Kalen Flannery 30, B Libby Ferguson 5, C Francisco Loyola 50, D Courtney Cruzmark 50, E Purnay Kotla 5.
And gentleman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to concur with the recommendation of license and permit on C one, C two, and C three after being read in any necessary applicant hearings.
Move a second to concur.
C two application of Brittany Hagopodian for a renewal operators license. C three application of Savannah Martinez for a new operators license.
Okay, at this time, open it up to a hearing. Anyone here speak on C one through C three, please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone here speak? Anyone here speak? Seeing none, close the hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrence. Any discussion? Gentleman from the 10th.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure the council is aware that C two is a approval subject to a non-renewal revocation and C three is a denial based on material police record.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, motion on the floor is concurrence. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
C four, new application of Steve Oberst for an amusement and recreation enterprise supervisor license.
Gentleman from 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve C four, C five, C six, C seven, C eight after being read in any necessary public hearings, applicant hearings.
C five, application of Laughing Llama LLC, DBA Laughing Llama for a new yearly peddler stand located at 3601 Seventh Avenue with no adverse recommendations from the police department. C six, applications for a temporary outdoor extension of the Class B beer, Class B liquor license with no adverse recommendations from the police department. A Kenosha Beach House LLC located at 5001 Simmons Island Road on May 24th through May 26th, 2025 for Battle of the Bands. B Mariah's of Kenosha Inc. located at 2724 Roosevelt Road on May 31st, 2025 for a 25 year anniversary party. C Mariah's of Kenosha City Inc. located at 2724 Roosevelt Road on June 14th, 2025 for a birthday party. C seven, application of Infostino's Pizzeria, Kenosha South Inc. for a probationary cabaret license located at 6839th Avenue with no adverse recommendations from the police department. C eight, application of CCIA Pub Management for a daily cabaret license located at 6832 24th Avenue for an event to be held on June 28th, 2025 with no adverse recommendations from the police department.
Okay, at this time, open it up to a hearing. Anyone here speak on item C four through C eight, please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone here speak? Anyone here speak? If not, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrence. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
C nine, application of Carrie Oberholzer for a taxi cab permit located at 8627 17th Avenue with no adverse recommendations from the police department.
Gentleman from 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve C nine through C 12 after being read in any necessary applicant hearings.
C 10, new application of Michaela Martinelli for a taxi driver license. C 11, application of Kiwi Kai LLC for a request to change closing hours of the permanent outdoor extension located at 6015 75th Street to 1:30 a.m. with no adverse recommendations from the police department. C 12, application of Noe James Inc. for a permanent outdoor extension of the Class B beer, Class B liquor license located at 4031 52nd Street with no adverse recommendations from the police department.
Okay, at this time, open it up to a hearing. Anyone here speak on C nine through C 12? Anyone here speak? Anyone here speak? If not, close the public hearing. Discussion. Gentleman from the 9th.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to the gentleman from the 10th. On C nine, the taxi cab permit is located at a residential house. I wasn't aware of the business in a residential neighborhood. That's why I was, can you educate me on that one?
Mr. Chairman.
I cannot educate him on that one. A, um, I would have to defer to city development or neighborhood inspection services in reference to that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is any, Mr. Knight, hang on. Go ahead, sir.
I did receive a late email this afternoon from city development indicating, I'll just read it. City development's recommendation for this license is for the applicant to obtain a home occupancy permit to operate the business from the home. The home occupancy permit would be issued for the applicant to do paperwork from the home, not dispatch. We recommend that the council issue the license subject to a hold to obtain a home occupancy permit, which must include the property owner's signature.
Hang on, ma'am.
That was, that was, that was the entirety of the email.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna come back to the gentleman from the 9th, so I'll before, sir.
Uh, yeah, I've just, like, I just wanted, because as I said, this threw me for a loop seeing this one here because I know it's a residential neighborhood and I didn't know we're running businesses out of residential homes unless they had the business occupancy permit. Um, so that's why I questioned it. So it's basically, we've, we approved this tonight. They're still pending the occupational permit for, for them to actually run the business from his home. Is that correct?
Mr. Knight.
You'd have to issue the license subject to a hold. So the motion would have on the, on the application needs to be to grant subject to a hold for secure, first, to secure a home occupancy permit.
Okay, so by approval, basically, it's still gonna be on hold until he, he does the other paperwork. That's what you're saying, right?
Mr. Knight, do we need to pull this item and do a separate motion?
That would be easier at this point.
Okay, is there a motion to separate C nine?
So moved.
Move in a second to separate C nine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Gentleman from the 9th, you still have the floor?
Uh, that's all I have for you.
Okay. And gentleman from the 10th.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. That's what I was going to suggest. We just need the applicant hearing now, sir.
Okay. Uh, gentleman from the 3rd.
Uh, thank you. I have a question for city development or the city attorney. What are the zoning implications of this if the property is zoned residential?
Zon.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm sure that the property is owned residential at 8627 17th Avenue, but as the city attorney mentioned, the recommendation is that the council issue the license subject to a hold to obtain a home occupancy permit. One of the things we look for in a home occupancy permit is, are there any negative externalities that impact other neighbors? Uh, you know, a cab coming and going would not rise to that level. Obviously, we don't want people working on cars from a home occupancy license and we don't issue those for that reason. At, in my mind, you could either issue tonight, uh, subject to a hold, or you could table it and we'll come back in two weeks.
You know, as far as I'm, because in my mind, you see, you know, if it's a single cab coming and going, it wouldn't be a thing, but it, it, it's not dispatch, obviously, but it would still, I think the neighbors would find it a little bit disruptive to have a cab service next door that is a residential house.
I, uh, I'm sure there's plenty of people who drive Ubers without registering in any way, but I, you know.
I understand what you're saying.
If we're talking one cab coming and going, I don't think it's a big deal. If you want to table it, we can look into it and, and, you know, take a look at the property and discuss it more with the applicant.
Well, if it's tabled, then we need to have a, a separate vote to take it off the table and all that, so I will not make that motion.
Defer it. Defer it.
Want to come up? Come on up. Uh, without objection, I'm gonna, we already had the hearing, but I am gonna open it up for the owner to speak. Without objection, seeing none? Please give us your name and address through the record, please.
Uh, Carrie Oberholzer, 8627 17th Avenue. Um, we were just in here three months ago for yellow cab, got approved for the same thing, same address. Uh, there was no question, um, under Steve Oberholzer. And then prior to that, 510 something, Tina Oberholzer had hers in her housing for 40 years. So I'm not sure why we're questioning 8627 17th Avenue and we didn't do it three months ago. And it's one cab and I've lived there for a long time. My neighbors are very proud of me, so I'm not sure why this is being brought up this time.
Well, there's not a, a back and forth, ma'am. It's just an, uh, opportunity for you to state your case, answer any questions you might have heard from the council. And if there are questions from the council, they can direct them to you.
Okay, so yes, it's one cab coming out and my drivers come and pick it up and they will leave the house. And then it's ran through the night and then they bring it back in the morning for the next shift. So it's not constant in and out of the house.
Okay. Um, unless you had anything else? Anyone else on, anyone from the public on item C nine? Anyone else? Anyone else seeing none? Close the public hearing. Um, I would just say, it was brought up by the, the alderman of the district, um, so I think it's a valid question to ask at, at this point in time. Um, gentleman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure we stated the motion that C nine is a, is motions to approve subject to the holds mentioned by the city attorney.
That's your motion? And that's with the second? Okay. Everyone understand what the motion is? Okay, motion on the floor is approval, subject to the holds as stated by the city attorney. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Gentleman from the 10th on the C 10 through 12?
Uh, move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
And we've already read them. We've already had the hearings. Any more discussion on C 10 through C 12, which is to concur with LP? Okay. Motion on the floor is concurrence, C 10 through C 12. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
C 13, application of Fonte Food Store LLC for a new Class A beer, Class A liquor cider only license located at 1450th Avenue with no adverse recommendations from the police department to be effective July 1st, 2025.
Gentleman from the 10th.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to send this back to committee. Um, there are some concerns that will be voiced, I believe, by the alter person of the district, but I make a motion to send it back to committee.
Move in a second to send back to committee. It is noted for a public hearing, so we will have, hold the hearing. Anyone here speak on item C 13? Please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone here speak? Anyone here to speak? If not, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is to send back to committee. Any discussion? Gentleman from the 7th.
Yes, I'm, I'm glad that this is being sent back because there's a, a lot of questions that I have about the business plan and how it fits into, uh, what they are proposing to do with the business. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, all those in favor to refer back to committee, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
C 14, renewal applications for Class A beer, Class A liquor licenses. A ANK Waterfront Inc. 45, B ANK Mexican Grill, Mexican Grill Inc. 45.
Gentleman from 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve C 14, 15, and 16 after being read in any necessary applicant hearings.
C 15, renewal application of Ming Garden 2 Inc. for a Class B beer only license located at 3319 60th Street, subject to review of economic impact statement with no adverse recommendations from the police department. C 16, renewal applications for the following licenses with no adverse recommendations from the police department. A three Class A retail beer, B 10 Class A retail beer, Class A liquor, C one Class P beer, Class C liquor, D 34 Class P beer, Class B liquor, E one Class P beer, Reserve Class B liquor.
Okay, at this time, open it up to a hearing. Anyone here speak on item C 14 through C 16? Please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone here speak? Anyone here speak? Seeing none, close the hearing. Motion on the floor is approval. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
E ordinance is first reading. E one ordinance by the mayor to repeal and recreate subparagraph 1.01D1P regarding the 16th Aldermanic District for the purpose of adding Ward 98. Finance recommended to approve six to zero.
Motion?
Motion to approve, uh, to send E one and F one on their way after being read.
F zoning ordinance is first reading. F one ordinance by the mayor. Attachment and zoning district classification ordinance, state approved cooperative plan, 14801 60th Street, Village of Bristol.
Motion send E one and F one on their way. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
G ordinance is second reading. G one ordinance by the mayor to amend paragraph 1.06X3 Community Development Black Grant Committee members of the Code of General Ordnances for the City of Kenosha.
Gentleman from the 13th.
Uh, move to concur with the Finance Committee recommendation.
It's moving in.
To approve.
Move in a second to approve. At this time, open it up to a public hearing. Anyone here speak on item G one? Anyone here speak? Anyone here speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is approval of item G one. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries seventeen to zero. H zoning ordinance is second reading. H one rezoning ordinance by the mayor to rezone the property at the southwest corner of 38th Street and 128th Avenue from A two agricultural land holding district to M two heavy manufacturing district.
Gentleman from the 3rd.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Move to approve H one and H two after being read in all public hearings.
H two rezoning ordinance by the city plan commission to rezone the property at the southeast corner of 27th Street and 47th Avenue from A two agricultural land holding district to RS one, single family residential district, and C two lowland resource conservancy district.
Okay, at this time, open it up to a public hearing. Anyone here speak on item H one and H two? Anyone here speak? Anyone here speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is approval. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries seventeen to zero. I resolutions. I one resolution by the committee on finance to encumber certain 2024 budgeted monies as of December 31st, 2024 to be carried over and added to the 2025 budget. Finance recommended to approve six to zero.
Gentleman from 13th.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to concur with the Finance Committee recommendations on I one through I four after being read.
I two resolutions by the committee on finance to levy special charges. A boarding and securing $4,912, B trash and debris removal $3,271.7, C property maintenance reinspection fees $14,498. Finance recommended to approve six to zero. I three resolution by the finance committee to impose a special charge on certain parcels of property for bulk trash removal. Finance recommended to approve six to zero. I four resolution by the finance committee to impose a special charge on certain parcels of property for bulk trash removal. Finance recommended to approve six to zero.
Okay, at this time, we opened up to a hearing. Anyone here speak on item I two? Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrent? I can see it. Gentleman from the 3rd.
Uh, thank you. I have a modest request. Uh, when we get this back up on I three and I four, there are the parcel numbers where the bulk was picked up, but no addresses. You got the addresses of the homeowner, but not where it was picked up. And I don't know who to address this to, but I do make just a simple request that in future backups, the address of the place also be included, uh, in our backup so that we can tell, you know, because getting a parcel number is not, at least for me, is not the same as having the, the home address. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is concurrence on I one through I four. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries seventeen to zero. I five resolution by the mayor to approve a preliminary plot located at 27th Street and 47th Avenue.
Gentleman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, make a motion, concur with the finding of public works on I5.
Moving. Moved and seconded to approve item, or concur on item I5. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. I6 Resolution by the mayor to authorize by resolution special events for 2025, finance recommended to approve six to 0.
Gentleman from the 13th.
Move to concur.
It's been moved by the gentleman from the 13th to concur. Seconded by the gentleman from the 10th. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. J Appointments, reappointments by the mayor, J1 Appointment of Elizabeth McGreevy to the Kenosha Public Museum Board of Trustees to fill a term that begins May 20, 2025 and will expire April 30, 2028.
Motion?
Move to approve J1 through J5 after being read.
J2 Appointment of Pamela Devois to the Kenosha Transit Commission to fill a term that begins June 8, 2025 and will expire June 7, 2028. J3 Reappointment of Atifa Robinson to the Kenosha Public Library Board of Trustees to fill a term that begins July 1, 2025 and expires June 30, 2028. J4 Reappointment of Alderperson Anthony Kennedy to the Kenosha Transit Commission to fill a term that begins June 6, 2025 and expires June 7, 2028. J5 Reappointment of Alderperson Roland Pazala to the Kenosha Transit Commission to fill a term that begins June 6, 2025 and expires June 7, 2028.
Okay. Motion on the floor is approval of J1 through J5, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. K Public Construction and Improvement Contracts, K1 Award of Contract for Project 25-1045 29th Avenue Resurfacing to Cornerstone Pavers LLC in the amount of $556,200.
Gentleman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, make a motion to concur with the, uh, approval of, uh, public works on.
Moving second to concur on item K1, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. L Other Contracts and Agreements, L1 Professional Engineering Services Contract with Betterman for Project 24-1045 Eighth Avenue Reconstruction, finance recommended to approve six to 0.
Gentleman from the 13th.
Move to concur, uh, with, with the Finance Committee recommendations on L1 and L2 after being read.
Second.
L2 Agreement by and between City of Kenosha and Cooney Architects LLC for Police Department Facility Pre-Design Study, finance recommended to approve six to 0.
Okay, motion on the floor is concurrence in L1 and L2, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. L3 Department of Natural Resources, UNPS Grant Acceptance for South Creek Restoration.
Uh, gentleman from the 2nd.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I move to approve on behalf of the Stormwater Utility Committee. Yes.
Moving and seconded to concur with Stormwater Utility. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. L4 Contract to Remove and Dispose of Asbestos Containing Material and Universal Waste, Raise Structures and Restore Lot at 5113 13th Avenue between the City of Kenosha and Safe Abatement for Everyone, Inc., finance recommended to approve six to 0.
Gentleman from the 13th.
Uh, thank you, I move to concur with the, uh, Finance Committee recommendations on L4, 5, and 6 after being read.
L5 First Amendment to the Subgrantee Agreement between the City of Kenosha and Boys and Girls Club of Kenosha, Inc., Scope of Services and Budget Amendment, finance recommended to approve six to 0. L6 First Amendment to the Subgrantee Agreement between the City of Kenosha and Women's and Children's Horizons, Inc., Extension for Use of Fund Amendment, finance recommended to approve six to 0.
Okay, motion on the floor is approve of L4 through L6. At this time, open up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on items L5 and L6? Please come forward, state your name and address, anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? If not, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrence, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. L7 Professional Services Agreement with Rooker Milky for a Trumper Basin Stormwater Design.
Gentleman from the 2nd.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I move to approve on behalf of the Stormwater Utility Committee.
Moving and seconded to approve item L7, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. M Recommendations from the Committee on Finance, M1 Request from Minneki Nico LLC to refund one reinspection fee in the total amount of $72 for 162556th Street, finance recommended to deny, six to 0.
And gentleman from the 13th.
Move to concur with the Committee recommendations on M1 and M2 after being read.
To deny. Sorry about that.
M2 Request for Review of a Special Charge for Snow Removal in the Total Amount of $280.32 for 3,003, 28th Street, finance recommended to deny, six to 0.
Okay, at this time, open it up to a hearing. Anyone here to speak on item M1? Please come forward, state your name and address, anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the hearing. Motion on the floor is to concur, which is to deny, M1 and M2, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. M3 Request for Review of a Special Charge for Snow Removal in the Total Amount of $1,327.52 for 71452nd Street, finance recommended to defer, six to 0.
Gentleman from the 13th.
Move to, uh, concur with the Committee recommendation to defer. M3.
Moving and seconded to concur, which is to defer on this item, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will, will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0. M4 Award of Contract for Official City Newspaper to the Kenosha News for the Period of June 1, 2025 through May 31, 2026, finance recommended to approve, six to 0.
Gentleman from the 13th.
Move to approve as recommended by finance.
Second.
M4.
Any others, sir?
Uh, M5, M5 is receiving file.
Oh, the, what, your motion is to concur?
Yes.
And we can carry five and six?
Five and six, yes, sir, that'd be fine.
M5 KABA 2025 First Quarter Loan Reports, finance recommended to receive and file, six to 0. M6 Distribution Record Number 8, $10,988,731.74, finance recommended to approve, six to 0.
Okay, motion on the floor is concurrence with M4 through M6, which is to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Alderperson Kennedy.
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries 17 to 0. Zero Recommendations from the Committee on Public Safety and Welfare, O1 Request from Joel and Gail Rickert for a Backyard Chicken Coop License.
Gentleman from the 5th.
Motion to approve as recommended by Public Safety and Welfare.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to concur with Public Safety and Welfare. At this time, open up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on item O1? Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrence, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 14 to 3. P And Such Matters As Are Authorized by Law or Regular Business, P1 Claim of Artisan and Trucker's Casualty Company, finance recommended to concur with the recommendation of the city attorney, six to 0.
Gentleman from the 13th.
Move to concur with the Finance Committee recommendations on P1, P2, and P3 after being read.
P2 Claim of Auto, Auto Owners Insurance, P3 Claim of Progressive Universal Insurance Company, finance recommended to concur with the recommendation of the city attorney.
Which was?
To approve.
And as for 1, 2, and 3?
That's correct.
Okay, motion on the floor is to concur with finance on P1, 2, and 3. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye, those opposed no, roll call, please.
Motion carries 17 to 0.
Okay, um, just, uh, one comment I wanted to make, um, we had an update today in finance uh, that was given from our consultant, um, Clarence, who is doing, I, I will tell you guys, is doing an outstanding job. Uh, hopefully, everybody who had the opportunity to kind of get that overview can see, um, you know, we've got a lot of big projects going on, road projects, um, lots of various things that are happening. Um, the overhaul that is, that is going on, uh, kind of behind the scenes, um, is truly transformational. And I think hopefully you guys got that from the presentation, uh, today. We will continue to, uh, provide updates to the council as this project continues on its way, um, because it is, it is a two-year commitment on our part. Our final go-live date is January of '27, so there's a lot of work to be done. But I just wanted to let you guys know that, first of all, I think, um, our staff is doing an amazing job of balancing their day-to-day operations with also trying to meet all the requirements to try to get this done. Uh, and also that the consultant that you all approved, hired, I think, is doing a phenomenal job uh, in terms of keeping us on track, uh, finding, getting the information, getting us, setting us up, helping with, we actually took a, some of the staff members took a tour up to another community to see how they were actually using it, um, I think that was very helpful to answer questions, so, um, this is a major investment on the city's part and a long, um, long process. But at the end of the day, as you heard from, uh, our, our consultant, uh, this is truly going to assist not only our employees, but also our customers, which at the end of the day are the people who, uh, who allow us to continue to do what we do here. So my thanks to all the staff and everybody for all the hard work. Um, we've got some amazing folks who are, who are, who are learning a lot. And, uh, at the end of the day, it's going to be a very, a very, uh, I believe it's going to be a smooth transition when we get to the end. That's just for you, Carol. Alderperson's comments, gentleman from the 10th.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to extend the condolences to Cory St. Marie Carles, former city employee, uh, former director of KABA, uh, former mayor of St. Francis, and a very dear friend to the city of Kenosha. There is not a nonprofit that she has not helped with, served on the board with, helped finance, and unfortunately, she lost her husband, and I just wanted to extend, uh, my condolences and ask that people please keep Cory and her family in their hearts and prayers. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, and gentleman from the 3rd.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. You may not feel it today, but spring has come, and as the balmy weather happens, um, there is a couple of things that, uh, we all get many calls of, especially in residential areas, about people exceeding the speed limit and tearing around our side streets at a, um, excessive manner. I ask people to cease and desist that, not only because it's against the law, which it is, but at, at the same time, you've got a lot of kids, and my, in front of my street, there are always kids out in the street, uh, either, you know, playing, you know, chasing balls, whatever. You can't be in such a hurry that it's worth hitting some child that runs out into the street or is playing in the street. You can't be in that much of a hurry. And also, uh, we're going to be starting to get calls from neighbors about tall grass pretty soon. So be aware, because if, if you let your grass get a little bit too high, the city's going to come and get you. Thank you.
Gentleman from the 17th.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's been a lot of questions raised about sci-fi putting Wi-Fi in downtown and how they're leaving the properties. Um, I just want to give a shout-out to one of our contractors, Bendelli Construction. They, uh, replaced the sidewalk square out in front of my business at 719 50th Street, and it looks just perfect in the way it was before they started digging, so I just wanted to give a shout-out to, uh, Bendelli Construction for taking the time and putting the, the care into replacing the sidewalks and hopefully getting the Wi-Fi in here soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and gentleman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, just a reminder to, uh, Kenosha that, uh, this Wednesday, May 21st, we'll be celebrating our 19th Annual Mental Health Awareness Vigil. And this is a joint effort between NAMI Kenosha, Bridges Community Center. So this event will start at 5:00 PM at Bridges Community Center, 5718 7th Avenue. And then after the reception, we'll walk over to Civic Center Park for the vigil at 6:00 PM. So extended invitation to all hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, motion to adjourn on your laptop would be in order. Moving and second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Yeah.
We stand adjourned, thank you, everybody.